All right, call to order, North Smithfield Town Council meeting, May 15, 2023. Madam Clark, can you start us with prayer and pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Ogier.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here.
Thank you. Open forum pursuant to 4246-6. Claire, did you sign up too?
Yes, I signed up on speaking at the back.
Okay.
If you can, I can hear about the walk.
No, you can do it now, just.
Good evening. I'm appearing tonight as a taxpayer because I got multiple calls this morning that was a rude awakening. It seems that cities and towns were asked to volunteer to take homeless people into this town. Evidently, a Mr. Lessing from a group in One Socket volunteered One Socket in North Smithfield. I was agitated, maybe I'm wrong, but the second person gave even more information. North Providence was asked and they said no. Johnston was asked and they said no. I thought perhaps the mayor in One Socket had volunteered, talked to her later. She wasn't asked. And she had just come out of a meeting and they were making sure to tidy a lot of things up, if this was going to happen and how it was going to be done and how long it was going to be done for. In North Smithfield, I was able, waiting the day, to get a hold of Mr. Zulinski. And I imagine things weren't completely finished there. But the motels on 146 have cost the town along the way a few bucks, especially the one on the hill. They take a lot of the town's resources. As long as I've known them, they haven't been the safest places. And what is this act of charity costing our town? I think people should be made aware of this. And as you know, 146, I don't know how they're going to eat or where they're going to go, but it's a very dangerous area. But above all, we sit in a council. No one was ever asked or called, or maybe some people were, and we don't know. And I thought tonight it'd be something we'd want to address. And as One Socket has finite plans for this, I'd like to think we do also. At that time, I even asked the chiefs, how much does it, you know, yearly, does it cost us to service those places? And they, at one time, appeared before us because of frequencies. I was hoping that the town would maybe take an interest in it because it's not, I don't think it's well planned. I really thought Cumberland next to the governor, they have more, I think, open space there. It would have been a nicer place. But of course, not too many from that area called a couple of shows and agreed with me on that. It's not there. I don't think it's planned. And I'm hoping that the powers that be will call Mr. Zulinski and people on the council, unless they have, and we didn't have a chance, it's been so fast to hear. But it frightens me that it's too fast. People didn't come together unless they called you chief and asked for your opinion, et cetera, either of you. And if it does go forth, we should be compensated for extra time and manpower it is costing this town. And I have a feeling it will. That is all, thank you.
Mike Clifford for 89 Black Plain Road. You know, I just wanted to recap. I've stated it several times throughout the last several months, but I feel compelled to keep mentioning it because I don't, I'm not sure that it's being conveyed as seriously as you should be taking it and accepting it. And that is the depreciation of the tangibles schedule. When you do your five-year forecasting, and John, you asked a question about how reliable is this? It's as reliable as the information that you put in. If you put in bad information, it's going to give you nothing. If you put in good information, it'll be close to the ballpark. But the tangibles, when I, before I got on the Budget Committee, in 2010, the total assessed value of tangibles in this town was only $58 million. It's now $157 million. And it peaked in 2015 at $187 million. And that is mostly due to National Grid's infrastructure and the further development of Darling Village and the completion of projects at Darling Village. I told you that when we did a forecast on the Budget Committee in 2015 to figure out what the impact would be on the bond, we did study the tangibles. And I think I sent most of you, or all of you, a copy of that report that showed how we predicted the tangibles would be going. And it's vital that you really pay attention to it. And I thought, if I mention these numbers tonight, maybe you'd get the idea of how significant this is. Because if National Grid is done with their infrastructure improvements, we're going to go back to the old days. By the way, National Grid depreciates their assets, this type of asset, at, I think it's 5% a year to a base of 30% of the original cost. So whatever amount of money they dumped into this town for their infrastructure, it's going to be going away and evaporating very quickly at 5% per year in assessed value. And that translates into serious money. The money we collected just from National Grid in 2015 on the 187 million was 7,653,000. In 2010, when we were only getting 58 million, we only got 2,505,000. We're going down in that schedule, and you haven't seen it or felt it yet because there's been things to offset it. Before this big impact came into place, the tangibles basically were a wash. We'd depreciate 5 million in tangibles from the companies, but we'd get 5 million in new investments in that year. This was an anomaly that only about three communities in the state felt. North Smithfield, Smithfield, and Barville, I believe. And it is, it's very, very unusual when this happens that that much investment in tangible comes online over that short a period of time. But you really need to have, if you have to hire a consultant to do it, I don't remember exactly how we did it in 2015. I know we worked with the tax assessor, and I know we asked her for printouts of, you know, the schedules and how many years were left on all the assets and came up with it. But even if you just focus on National Grid alone, it's going to show you that we're going to lose some significant, significant money. And when it dove in 2016, it went from 173 million to 157 million the next year. And that was a change in revenue of about $600,000. You usually only increase your budget by about 100 to 102 million. So I'm just trying again to get you to realize this is something very important, and you really need to do it, or you're going to be on everybody's B-list when this hits the fan and the taxes start going up just to replace the revenue you're losing from National Grid's tangibles. Because you are going to have to increase taxes to replace that revenue. On top of that, you've got a bill in the General Assembly that I was reading about the other day from Senate, is it Representative Murray? And I think even Jessica was in on it, too, Delacruz, on the tangible. And I don't see, maybe, I don't know what the bill looks like. I wanted, I tried to call to find out the particulars on it. I left a message for Melissa to give me a call, and I haven't heard from her. But I'm a little concerned about that, and I think you should be too because it's exempting the first $100,000 of the tangibles. And all I keep thinking is, okay, that may not be that much money to us, but to a lot of communities that have a lot of businesses in their cities and towns, like Providence and Cranston and Warwick, that's massive amounts of revenue that they're going to not be taxing the property owners on, but the state is going to supposedly replace that revenue. And my question is, where's it going to come from? And little communities like us who don't have big base of tangible, many small companies that will benefit by that, as many as the other cities and towns do, I think we're probably better off just taxing our own tangibles rather than having them. Because if that's a big pool of money that they have to replace in the other cities and towns, it's going to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from all of the taxpayers in the town in state income tax increases or something. I mean, where are they getting all this money from? So proportionately, there's going to be big bucks going to Providence, like they do for education. Providence always gets a good 3% to 4% increase in their state aid to education every year. Covers the whole cost of increasing their education budget, so does One Socket, but we don't. And it's going to be the same thing with this thing. We're going to get the short end of the stick, I think, on the tangibles. And Providence and one of those communities will get the lion's share of savings. So I think it might be a good idea if you go back to the practice of once a year, in the spring, having a meeting with your legislators to talk about pending legislation, what you'd like to see enacted, and what they need to be aware of. And I think there should be some discussion on this. Maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, I don't know. I haven't been able to get all the particulars yet. But it just sent up a red flag because on top of losing the revenue from tangibles to the depreciation, you're now going to be losing this, in this revenue source too. So, anyway. I'll ask two, my standard question. Farm, forest, and open space, are we making any progress on finding out why that's still being taxed as?
I have to schedule a meeting with Jen. I just haven't been able to do that. So probably within the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to meet with her and get an update.
Okay, thanks.
Our next one is North Smithfield Town Council, sitting as board of Licee Commissioners. A discussion by council vote on other action on Victorling Holiday License DBA Hercules Pizza located at 7 Main Street, owner Aaron Andrews. Is there anyone here representing? Did you want to come up to the podium, please?
Hi, everybody. My name is Aaron Andrews. Just took over Hercules Pizza in North Smithfield, 7 Main Street. Very excited to start over there, taking over for Hercules and his family. If I could pronounce his last name, I would, but that's hard. My family is from North Smithfield as well. I don't know if everybody knows Dan Andrews. He used to be the town administrator as well. Been in the restaurant business for a very long time, my whole life. So I'm excited to start my journey with Hercules Pizza. Anybody have any questions for me?
First of all, good luck.
Thank you.
Would gladly come home to do it.
Thank you.
Now, your dad's which one?
My dad was Danny Andrews. He worked at Gators Pub for 25 years. Yep. Yes. Thank you.
Aaron, I live right around the corner.
Yes.
So we get delivered a lot.
Yeah.
And I got to tell you, the pizza and food is fantastic.
Good. Keeping most of the same recipes from what they've had, so everything should stay the same. Hopefully only making improvements. A lot of work to do, but I'm excited.
Madam Clark, everything is in order as on here. All right, anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license for Hercules Pizza.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
B, discussion by council vote on other action on secondhand license DBA Crystal Poke Breaks located at 1 Remington Circle, owner Sean Rampino. Did you want to come up to the podium, please?
Hello. My name is Sean Rampino. I'm new to North Smithfield, so I'm kind of getting used to the area. It took me a second to get over here, even though I'm right up the street. But my business, Crystal Poke Breaks, is a primarily online business. It's run out of my house. It's all focused around trading card games and like other sorts of trading cards, like baseball cards, football, basketball, Magic the Gathering, Yu-Gi-Oh, Pokemon. Most of it is through live sales, like live online, interacting with customers. And yeah, that's kind of pretty much everything, so. Do you have any questions about how things are facilitated or anything like that?
How long have you been doing this?
For the past six months, I would say. We've been, we've been kind of irregular at first, and then it's kind of created a more normal schedule as to fitting it in with my other job, and then also, you know, getting a follower base. And, you know, as you become, you know, a little bit more involved in the community online, it makes things go a lot smoother, so.
So is the majority of this online, or is there actual?
Yep.
And again, Joanne, everything's all in order? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, let me see, what am I doing here? To authorize a secondhand license to DBA Crystal Poke Breaks located at 1 Remington Circle.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'd like to move up. Old Business, discussion by council and presentation by bound council regarding bond referendum questions for the renovation of existing police station and/or construction of new police station. One, resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation authorizing the town of North Smithfield with the approval of the qualified electors to issue not to exceed a dollar amount general obligation bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness to finance either the development and construction of a new police station or the renovation improvement, alteration, and repair of an existing building to be used as a police station as determined by the town council and the furnishing and equipping thereof. Or two, Rhode Island General Assembly and Act authorizing the town of North Smithfield to finance either the development and construction of a new police station or the renovation improvement, alteration, and repair of an existing building to be used as a police station as determined by the town council and the furnishing and equipping thereof by the issuance of not more than a dollar amount bonds and/or notes therefore. Hi, Ellen, thank you for coming.
Good evening, everyone, Madam President and members of the council. So we've changed things, as you know. The desire was that you would like to present alternative questions to the voters, have the voters decide whether or not they want a new police station for X amount of dollars, a brand-new police station, or a, or the renovation of an existing building to use as a police station for X minus something dollars. So what you have in front of you is a bond act. It's, the bond act is basically the same. The title is obviously different from the prior one that we've discussed. But what is the real difference is the question at the end in Section 11. I know you want to take advantage of the special election that's coming up in November because of the vacancy in the Congress seat. So we're coming to the end of the General Assembly session. So this is something that if you choose to go this route, the next council meeting, I would imagine, you'll have your numbers because the number's a blank right now. But I would imagine that at the next council meeting, you'll have something in the way of dollar amounts for each of the projects. And then we'll be able to get this to the General Assembly. But we are coming to the point where the General Assembly might be mad at you if you submit something now, so. So if you, Section 11 is the section that would put the question before the voters. So we were able to draft the question. You know, initial recommendations were that, you know, it's never, it's rarely, if ever, done this way where we have different things. It doesn't mean we can't do it, but it does tend to confuse the voters. But I think we were able to draft this question in such a way that it actually is really clear to the voters. So I'm very, I'm happy. It's something that I can support. I'll be able to do my bond council letter to the General Assembly that says everything's in order, that it's good. So I don't know if you want me to read the question, or if you guys want to read it. It kind of loses a little if I read it. But basically, it's something like, please select only one of the following, and then it's going to be three different options. I approve project one, the development, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new police station and the issuance by the town of general obligation bonds and notes therefore in a principal amount of not to exceed X, whatever the dollar amount is. Next, check this box if I approve question two, the renovation improvement, alteration, repair, furnishing, and equipping of an existing building to be used as a police station and the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed. And why? Box three, I do not approve either project one or project two. So that will be the form of the question. I mean, it might need a little bit of refinement depending upon the project that you end up undertaking under each of those scenarios. But that, there you go, so.
So I know before we had talked about that we just, we didn't want to confuse the voters, and we just wanted to give one. So you, I mean, it is pretty straightforward.
I think so.
Claire, so you think that no one would be up there trying to decipher what we're trying to ask them?
No, I do, I do think that the way that this process works is, you know, we decide on a bond act. You pass a memorializing resolution that asks the General Assembly to pass that bond act or to consider that bond act and pass it. They get, it gets introduced to both the Senate and the House by your reps. They're called companion bills, sorry. They're called companion bills, sorry. They're called companion bills. At some point, the, it'll get assigned to a committee, most likely Senate Finance and House Finance. They'll consider it. They'll look at it. Their staff will most likely pick up the fact that this is a very different question from what is traditionally used as a question in the state. So they're going to, they might need testimony up at the General Assembly, or they might need questions, which we, you know, we're familiar with doing. But it might take a little bit of education for them to get comfortable with this, but I think, I think we can do it, so.
Anyone have any questions?
So I have, I have two quick questions. So I know when we last spoke, you said that this type of questioning would be non-binding, so this is binding legislation.
Yep, yep.
My second question is, is that maybe this is more for the council, but what happens if somebody chooses C? We've all said doing nothing is not really a viable option, and if somebody chooses C, we've literally just spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, doing nothing. So I worry about giving an option that says I do not approve either project one or two, because I think the majority of the people in the community will say we either need new or we need to renovate like new or renovate. And I just, I worry that doing nothing is not a good solution in this, in this issue. So is that possible, like if somebody chooses it?
No, not, not, I mean, if, if you went back to the other, for instance, the other way, the, the traditional bond question, you, you would end up, you'd have a binary, it would be a binary question. It would be shell the, shell the, you know, shell the town, shell a question passed at this generalist, at this session of the General Assembly entitled an act, blah, 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 be approved. Yes or no? So the no is the reject.
But in this, it says, I do not approve either project one or two. So if 75% of the community comes out and says, I like that option. I don't want to be taxed. I don't want my money spent.
But that's their option.
But that's binding at this point, right? So if we go back to the drawing board?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good solution.
But any bond question, they have to have an option of not issuing bonds.
No, I get it.
So, of course, the quick questions to the council. Maybe it was the meeting that I was out in April, but when did we decide that we were going to go with the two questions, with the, with the full, you know, full re, you know, remodel, I mean, the full, you know, new building or remodel? When did we decide that?
I don't think we did. That's why we're reviewing it, to see what we can give to options, to see what kind of options we can give the voters, rather than just voting on a $20 million police station or doing nothing.
And then have it be nothing.
Right.
That's what we're afraid of, too.
I mean, that's the exercise we're going through now, determining what, what actually you want to ask the General Assembly to pass and what question you want, what questions, question you want to put before the voters.
So that would be to Councilman Ogier's question. So that would be the same thing if we had one. That you would still need to have a, I do not approve, correct?
Well, if you had a more, the more, the traditional question, which I'm calling the binary question, the single question, you either approve it or you don't.
Right.
If you don't approve it, no authority to issue bonds there.
Yeah, we're still at that, yeah. Which is why we had started thinking an alternative might be an option so that we don't face that prospect of having nothing on the table.
The, the only other question I have with, with this, and I'm fine with giving options, but when we talk about renovation, what dollars are we using? Because we have to put in a dollar amount, and right now, the only dollars we have.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, but the only dollars that we have was what Tecton did. So that, you know, we're literally going to be giving people that option that says it's, I don't know, 18 million, 15 million, or do not do anything. If you go too low, you're going to end up in the same situation we're in now, where we don't have enough money to do any of the work.
Right.
So I will tell you about 99% of the projects in the state do not have enough bond authority at this point. Things are changing rapidly in terms of costs and inflation, so, so it's best to, you know, to not leave yourselves without, without.
So what do they do in that case? They have to go back out for an additional?
Or you find it somewhere else, yeah, yeah.
Well, I would still like to see the, as I'm on the record saying this, all along the 2014, at least a dollar amount, that would give us an idea for a renovation. Because the renovation we have from Tecton is not apples to apples. It's a renovation with a, an addition, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to put as much information out to the voters as we can so they can make a decision. I mean, it's their taxes that are going to be impacted, so. And like you said, even if we just gave them a $20 million question, it's still going to be approve or, or deny, so. Either way, if they deny it, we're going to be back to square one again, too, so.
So like I just said, I'm fine with giving options, but I think we need to zero in on what option renovate cost looks like, because the next meeting, I think, is what, June, so June 5th, June 12th, so. That's my concern, is we're not going to have enough time to.
Who, who are the, what's, who's your legislative delegation?
It's Brian Newberry, he's the state rep. Jessica De La Cruz in the Senate, John Brain, and Melissa Murray still.
Has anyone talked with them in terms of, has anyone been able to get to them? No?
No, I don't think so. I don't think we've talked to them about this, but our drop-dead date is, is really fast approaching.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, I mean, technically.
You know, they can get it in anytime. I mean, but will they be happy about it, and will the committees actually address it, is the question? Will they have too much to worry about? They, they can put it in anytime, but, but you're calling, you're calling in some favors, and, and it's one of those, so sooner the better.
Excuse me, Mr. Vatney? Mr. Vatney, I hate to disturb your conversation, but you're on this committee. What do you say?
Of course, he's going to s-
Listen, I'm going to ask him. Absolutely.
You've got a real smart person being your bond counsel. She's given you good advice. However. The council has already made the determination not to pursue a renovating of that building. That was previous council.
Previous.
Previous council.
That's right.
Already made that determination that they were not going to look at renovating this building. So most of the process that we've been going through forward has been a new construction. And that's what we've been working toward, is new construction. If you want to give people all these choices, that's fine, but the bottom line is, in my opinion, you need to decide what you want to do. Now, when I'm up on the, my agenda, right, I'm, I'll address it differently, but she's giving you advice, and she's telling you, you need to ask for the most, the higher amount of money, no matter what you do. And to your question, Mr. Ogier, you heard her. You can't have a bond question when on a reject. It just doesn't work that way. Whether you have five choices or two choices, there has to be a reject. That's just the reality of it. But it goes back to, we've been working toward a new building because that was the direction that we're given by the council. And I understand this is a new council, but we just can't throw out what was already, all the work that we've done going forward. There are still three members of this council that made that decision to go forward and not continue down the road of renovation, to be looking at new construction. If we put that double question on there, just my opinion, it's going to be very confusing. It's going to be more confusing than if we try to just go forward with one option. Just my opinion. You asked for it.
Well, I just feel you have some dedicated men. I think what you did, your work is excellent. You need to spend time going from one company to another. And if every two years you keep changing, I'll tell you, it doesn't make sense. You get wasted and the expense involved just gets higher and higher and higher. And I respect what you've done, and I thank you for introducing us so clearly.
I haven't, I actually haven't seen. All I saw was what was on the agenda. And, and I understand that's the biggest part of it, getting that act relating to, and I didn't have any, any issue with that. It's still, it's still your call whether you want to do those, but I still believe it's one, it's one choice. You either approve the money, or you don't. It's not approve it for this, or approve it for this, or reject it. It's approve it that can be this all-encompassing question. New renovation and all that at X number of dollars. It's not, my opinion, it's not a choice. It's you either do this, or we don't. It's not we do this, or we do this, or we don't. It's just one question. And just, I'm not saying this is a number, but is $20 million to build a new building or to renovate? Because the reality is, when you talk about renovation, and I'll get into this later, there's two ways to renovate, and you have to understand what it is you want to renovate. And like I say, I won't take up her time on this issue. It's, I have my own agenda item, and we'll, we'll address it under there. Okay?
Thank you.
So the question that you actually read, but part of this agenda item, actually does that. It, it, it gives you the option to build the new or renovate old, but the dollar amount that's blank right now, like there, you would have to use the higher number, because otherwise if you, if, you know, you would have to use the, the new construction number because you would need that money to do that. But that is, that, that's, that's the, the single question rather than the double. And I do, I mean, I want to make sure that you also know that if the second one is approved on, you know, it's the second one being the renovation question, if they approve renovation and they approve 15, 7, whatever, whatever it is you want, you cannot build new. You're not, you, you do not have the option under this. You, you have to, you can't change your mind and, and want to build new. You can't do that at the, after that, so. Even if you build new at that $15 million dollar amount.
So question two is strictly renovation or alteration? And the first one is?
Is strictly new.
Development, construction?
Right.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
What would you suggest? I know that at the last time you were here, I mean, you're the, you're the, you're the councilor, right? You're the attorney, so as, as, what would you suggest the way, the proper way to go about it? I know you said you made this work.
So I did make it work, and I, I actually am really happy with the, with, I mean, I think the question actually will, is a good question, the, the double question, the second, with the two questions. I think it's a matter, I'd have to say that it's, it's really more, legally, I'm fine with either. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm agnostic for, I mean, I'm, but I would have to say that, that if you, if you feel that, you know, you have a better sense of whether or not you need a new police station versus a renovated building, police station, if, if you have a building committee, you have, you know, you guys have a little bit more of the information in terms of budget, what you've seen, what people have presented to you. It, it's a matter of policy. Do you want to delegate that choice to the voters who may or may not have the same detailed information that you do, or who may only have it from a, you know, from, from a one meeting, whereas you guys have, and the building committee has had meetings on top of meetings? Is that, it's, it's a policy decision. It's not necessarily a legal decision. So I, to give you a choice, I mean, to give you my thoughts as to what I would do, I, that's not where, what I'm here for. I'm here to make sure that your question is legal and understandable, whatever way you decide to go with it, so. Sorry, I didn't help, but.
So in your experience?
Let me rephrase that.
In your experience with other communities, a bond question this important and this significant to the community, is it something that should go out to a special election when you have limited voters that vote, in your opinion?
Again, that's, that's a policy decision, but, but yes, a lot of communities do hold till the general election depending upon how they feel. Or, you know, how, how important they feel the question is. Will they, they're, they're concerned they're going to get a, less of a turnout for voters. However, if the, if the project and the, you know, what, what's happening in the community is important, people will show up. A lot of it happens with schools, like, you know, people, they don't like to do special elections in the summer, and, and more so the smaller communities, and sometimes the coastal communities where they don't like to do questions in the winter. They want to wait till they have their residents come, you know, for the summer. But, but, you know, it's definitely, it, it's not an unusual concern. It's not an unusual concern. You have to balance that with how quickly you need your new police station. And how, you know, and sometimes you have to balance it with your construction, your construction season, and when you need to put shovel in the ground, rising costs. You know, if you wait a year to do this and to do it at a general election, you're going to be, I mean, that's important for the community to save money, too, you know? So, so especially in this rising, this rising pricing, mark, price market, you know? Everything's going to be even that much more expensive next year. At least that's what people are saying. And that's what's happening on some projects from last year, you know, so.
All right. Anyone have any more questions?
So we're going to have a special meeting to talk about this?
Yeah. Do we want to talk about that now, to schedule a special meeting so that we can talk, just basically have that as our only agenda item, so we can decide on which way we want to go? You want to, do we want to go into next week?
As soon as possible. Whichever way you can arrange it, as soon as possible.
I know. Well, the 22nd is the first meeting of the multi-generational. Does next Tuesday, the 23rd work? Joanne, do you have anything that we wouldn't, not allow us to be in this room, or?
I would have to look, but I don't believe there's anything. I'll have to look on the calendar.
I'm sorry?
There is a zoning board, it's a zoning board tonight. I'm not sure if they have any applications.
Okay.
It does work, so.
Works for me, yeah.
Claire?
Absolutely.
So if the 23rd is clear of zoning, could we do a meeting on the 23rd?
Yes.
Next Tuesday? And this will be the only agenda item?
Same time.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam President, is this something you'll need me to be at?
I don't think so. I think if we have any questions, we can just email you and then kind of straighten it out that way and hopefully get everything kind of put in. 6:45, I, and then we can hopefully get answers by the end of the week with everybody, and would that give us enough time?
Yes. Yeah, by the end of this week, you mean? Before your meeting? Before the meeting, right? Not, not after you have your meeting?
Yeah, if anyone has any other questions, we'll send you an email, and we can go by that way, and then we'll do our meeting on the 23rd, on the 23rd, right? Yeah.
So during that meeting, are we going to have an updated number for project two?
Well, we're going to find out from Mr. Vatney. If not, if we can try and maybe schedule, if we can maybe get numbers from the old project so we can have a renovation number, but I just don't want to put a number out there that's not accurate, that's all. But at least we can maybe kind of fill in some of the blanks and get it a little bit tightened up. Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Ellen, for coming.
Thank you.
All right, let's just continue. All right, let's continue on that and do discussion by council voter, other action on status slash progress report on completion of specific items, the municipal building review task force.
Good evening again. Just so that you're aware, when, when you talk about renovating that existing building, you're going to have to be more clear, more-
you're going to have to be more clear, more explicit, on what it is that you're looking to renovate. Because when we went through this the first time, renovating it, it was to bring the building up to current standards and current codes, current policing standards and current codes. Current building, just to be renovated, like they did in this building, isn't going to do that. That's why, that's why we came in with that addition, the renovation addition, because just renovating that building does not get you to what you're looking for. That's why I didn't want to get into it earlier. It does not get us, doesn't get the town where they want it to be, just renovating what's there in that building. It needs to have additions put on it, to meet the current standards of policing. Now, that I want, there, there are standards out there that, that they want to meet, from weapon storage, to evidence storage, to record storage, to holding cells, all sorts of stuff. And the current building cannot accommodate that. That's why I say, just to look at this and say, well, let's go back to what we wanted to do in 2014. If you want to do what you wanted to do in 2014, that was to bring that building up to the current standards. The current standards today in 2023 are different than they were in 2014. In dealing with professionals that do this, it said it cannot be done in that building. It needs to have the additions put on it. Which brought us into that number that put us at 17 and a half million versus 18 million for a new building. That's why the decision was made, for that kind of money, we should build a new building, rather than have an older building renovated with four different levels in it, which created other issues. That's why we got to that point. So, it's a decision that has to be made on what exactly it is you want, is it, do you want a building renovated to bring it up to the current standards and codes? Or do you just want to fix that building? And so, we already have a number to do that, then. You have a number to do that. So, it's not a matter of going back out there. It's almost identical to the number of buil, of building a new building. We've done that exercise. So, just be aware of that, that that's out there. I don't know if you guys have, do you want us at that meeting on the 23rd, the, the task force?
Um, sure. Do, do you know when we'll have any updated number, um, because they were working on some more numbers, right?
Well, they're working on a proposal to get you a new number.
Okay.
Now, hm?
No, so they're giving us a proposal that we'll have to pay them to give us the updated numbers?
I don't want, because they've already done.
Right, no, I know, but they're not, right, right.
And so, you, you, you actually asked for that. Not you specifically, but the council asked for that proposal to get a number for a single story building. And so, they're working on that. I haven't seen it yet, they're working on that. A project, project manager for Tecton delivered a daughter a week and a half ago, so she's kind of indisposed right now. So, they got their addition, we didn't get ours yet. But we're, we're waiting for that, we're waiting for that number. We, we don't see where, that it's going to be a lot different than what we've already had, but they want to make sure that the validation of course is there. That's why, that's why they're going down that road. I don't know if we'll have that number by then. I can ask, but it's only, it's only a proposal that you would have to agree to. What you just looked at was an important step, though.
Yeah, at least we have that. I mean, we can...
That's an important step. Now, normally, when I get up here, I give you facts. It's not my opinion. And when we, and when we meet, you get factual information. Okay? Task force has been having joint meetings with the council for the last five months. Throughout that process, we've answered questions with factual information that has been gained in the six years that we've been working on different tasks given by the council. Every task has been concluded with a report or a recommendation on how to proceed. The task force has the role of investigating issues sought by the council. However, recently, after answering council questions with factual information, it was stated by others that they were sick of the lying. I really took that, took a lot of umbrage in that. And it's just, what I stated was factual. Okay? The council needs to be aware that the answers are based on public records, some of which were created prior to the establishment of the task force. The council has continuously heard multiple theories that state the police station can be rehabbed at a lower cost without any sustain, subsis, ah, substantially verified figures. The current assault is disinformation at worst, and grossly misleading at best. It is incumbent on you, elected officials, to not become stooges to this buffoonery, and, and reject and redirect. Please read all the reports, digest the facts, and come to the same conclusion that any reasonable person would. It's time to replace the old bushy school, and construct a new, modern, up-to-date, and compliant police station. I urge you not to spend time and effort worrying what if the ballot question fails, but to put your energies into making sure a positive outcome is achieved. I stand here today to urge you to move this project along for November 7th, 2023 referendum. The task force remains ready to offer its expertise to make this a reality, and bring it to a successful conclusion. That's my opinion. Waiting another year is going to add millions of dollars to this project. You've heard that, that's a fact. That's not my opinion, that's a fact, coming from the estimators, coming from your professionals that you've hired. So, it's time for you to do something. Because the reality is, this proposal that we're seeking from Tecton, that you, that you requested, if you don't go forward with the ballot question in 2023, reject the proposal because it is a waste of money, because it will no longer be valid in 2024. You heard it from bond council, the numbers are changing very quickly, and you've got communities that are underwater on projects. Yours won't be, because we've done the due diligence, the professionals have done the due diligence, they've extrapolated out the numbers, they've, they factored in escalation into the projects and all that. So, your numbers are good. Delaying this thing is going to cost this town millions of more dollars. That's a fact. The other part, that's my opinion. Have any other questions?
I'd like to make a statement, please. From day one.
I told this committee that we could not afford to pay for your expertise with all the time that you put into it. Diligence, everything was done, when you set goals for yourself on time. You took a realistic approach to that building from day one. Everybody likes old things, you like them to stay around forever, but it doesn't always last that way. I thank you, and if anyone has led you to believe that the majority of people believe, like, the statements that were made, it is not that way. I, I personally cannot thank you enough for your time, and for your effort. And the right thing must be done, because as you say, the longer you wait, we're going backwards, not forwards. And I apologize if anyone has offended you. And I thank you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Paul, I, piggybacking what Collette just said, I'd gotten to know all the members of the, of your committee. I was on the committee for a while. You don't deserve to be called names, you don't be, deserve to be called liars, and what, like she said, I'm sorry that you guys had to, have to put up with that.
Oh, you're in the arena, it happens, but I'm just letting, you know, I took, I took umbrage at it. The other, the others weren't here, but they heard about it. You, you've got to realize, and, and, and I, you know most of these guys in the committee. They have billions and billions of dollars in their portfolios. This is nothing to them. This is nothing. These guys do projects 10 times big, you know? It's just, you have, don't count me in this group, you have guys that have so much expertise in construction, that you need to listen to them. Really, you really do. It's what they do, this is how they make their living. You know, one guy ran the biggest sewer system in the state, Director of Operations. He has $2 billion of construction in his portfolio. How do you, how do you ignore that? You know, the other guy, Senior Vice President, copied out of probably $6 billion of construction. He probably has $100, $150 million of construction going on at any one time. How do you ignore that? How do you ignore that, that level of expertise? I don't.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions?
I just, on the renovation, we're getting the dollars, I just want to, again, hone in that, if that is going to be the route we go with one of the questions, which, again, I'm all for giving options, I just want to make sure that that's the all-in cost, because I was just looking, again, at the Tecton proposal with the additions. And even if you back out the additions for the 15,000 square foot building, they're talking about 4.3, but you easily get to like $9, $10 million when you talk about, you know, relocation, like closing things, like all the extra work that goes into it. So, even if the building itself is $4 to $5 million renovation, we need to know the all-in other costs, because we know what the new construction is. But if we go in and we say the renovation's going to cost no more than eight, and we come to find out it's 12, because we start tearing down asbestos, which, but they only tested a small sample of that building, we don't know what's behind the walls when we start doing work. And I just don't want us to be stuck in the same situation we're in now, where we're grossly under, because we took the cheaper option. Now, if it comes back and the all-in cost is 8 million, then great, by all means, and that's the way that the task force agrees, which I'm not, not putting words in Mr. Vatney's mouth. But then, at least then, it's a true comparison of your total cost. Because if you just say it's $4 million, and you renovate, and now it's $10 million or $12 million, there's going to be a lot of angry voters out there, because they said you could do this for four, and we're in the same situation we're in now.
Well, you're in that position today. You're in that position today because we put a question out there to do three different projects, not one of those three pieces had the right funding behind it to do what the scope was asked for. The road project, got eight roads done instead of 22. This project came in, $2 million over budget, $3 million over budget. The school department came in, $2 million over budget on a $4.3 million budget. So, the numbers that, that you had were woefully inadequate, that came out in the first report that we did way back. And that's what we're trying to avoid this time, because you're right, Mr. Rozier, you put out a question to do an $8 million project, and it comes in at $12 million, what do you Then you spend six years trying to figure out how to fix it.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, the next item is a three to five-year forecast.
I had sent you guys, um, an email, the council an email, a few days ago, um, with what I have so far. The thing that we're waiting on right now is, I had gotten involved, um, another tax assessor from Smithfield, and then I had gotten Dr. Dan, he's well-known in the tax assessor realm. Uh, he, I think he works for Central Falls, and he works for Northeast, if I'm not mistaken. We had tried to get the depreciation for the tangibles, it's not an easy report just to pull out at all. And those are two people who are very, very, very good with working with, um, Vision. And, um, so we ended up, they ended up basically escalating it to another person, Peter from Northeast. He's in contact with Jen, trying to create that report right now. Uh, it's been a couple of days now, but, um, Jen unfortunately was out today, but they are working on it. So...
Is it just that not many towns use Vision? Are we like one of the?
We are the one of the few towns that don't use Vision.
Oh, we don't use Vision?
Yeah, most towns, it's, it's, it's kind of like 60 or 70, 40, 30, that use Vision, from what I've experienced from being at the state.
Can I ask a quick question? Let's walk, clarify, so, we're working with Vision, and maybe I just didn't hear correctly, to, but we don't use Vision?
We're working, we don't use Vision, but we, we're working with people who have, who work, who work at Vision. We were working with people that worked at Vision. Now, we're working with people who work at Northeast, because the people that work with Vision also know Northeast.
Oh, because we're pulling data from the, okay.
Right, right, right. They're very similar reports, you can kind of pull the data and pull, push it in.
So, Tony, do you know approximately when that would be done? Because that, and I...
I would, yeah, I would like it, it was supposed to be done for this meeting.
$60,000 question, yeah.
Yeah, it was supposed to be done for this meeting, and, and last meeting, I said if there was no hiccups. Ran into the hiccup of the report being a lot more difficult to run than I had in, I had, I had figured it was going to be some type of difficulty, um, and lo and behold, we ran into it.
Is it because we don't have, like, an accurate number, or, I mean?
Yeah, yes and no. So, um, we've only been using, um, Kama, is the, is the system, it was Northeast Kama. We've only been using North, uh, Kama for the last two years, so we only have two years of data in Kama. Everything else for tangibles is basically on an Excel spreadsheet. And it's not, it's not as easy just grabbing that data and tossing into Kama. The way I've been explaining, I, I haven't used Kama myself, but again, this is coming from other people who are pretty much experts in these, in these programs. So, that's where the difficulty lies, is being able to pull this data and create the forecast based off that, off of only two years of data. It's kind of like us with e-finance, and we've only been using it for a year and a half, two years, we don't have a whole history, we have to go back into Phoenix for certain things, similar system.
I see, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, should we be using Vision?
I'd say they're both equally...
Did we pick the wrong software?
They're both equally as good, it's just, it, there's, um, they, each community kind of flip flops between them, depending on who gives them better pricing. From, from my experience, like I said, I, I, the only thing that I know is that more communities use Vision than they do Kama, but they're both, I don't think one is better than the other. I just think that one is bigger than the other. So, because Vision, they have more staff, I've actually met people who work from Vision at some of the tax assessor meetings back from the state. I've never personally met anyone from Kama in person, but I know, I have talked to them on the phone a lot of times. They are, they are, they are good to work with, it's just, again, one's bigger than the other. And it would be a lot more of a hassle to switch from Kama to Vision at this point, when we already have two years in Kama.
All right, the next one is grants.
Council members, on Friday, May 12th, I received a letter from Senator Reed's office, and it's dated May 10th. The reason for the delay was an email, a correct address coming to my attention. I want to preface this very carefully. Nothing is guaranteed here. First step, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank Senator Reed for moving this along to the Appropriations Committee, but it does not guarantee that it will be funded. The scope of this, of the action, I'm going to get to the grants in a minute, the applicability, and the grant amounts may or may not be awarded. That being said, we've been notified that four grants are moving forward through the congressional district spending for the, the year of 2024. I'll start with the lowest grant for consideration. Emergency Management Agency, radio equipment, $30,000, that's being brought forth for consideration. Palo Alto School Development, $1 million. Additional water main extension on St. Paul Street, $1.4 million. It's actually $1,410... Additional water main extension on St. Paul Street, $1.4 million, it's actually $1,410,000. And a grant for consideration for the North Smithfield Police Station in the amount of 20,000, $20 million. That's what's before us, this is what Senator Reed is recommending. He is on the Senate Appropriations Committee. Much like the grant that we received last year from Congressman Cicilline, it's still up in the air. It is going to take months, it'll take at least until the summer till the bipartisan take a look at this. It may be, I'm going to repeat myself, it may be scaled back, it may not be approved. But it's an honor to have Senator Reed push this forward for consideration. I'll try to answer your questions.
I have a quick question. So that's fantastic news. The police station, is that new renovation? Are there any grant, the only reason I'm asking is because we just had a discussion about binding language and if the voters choose to bind to renovating and the grant for 20 million is for new, we're stuck. That was my point is, no?
If 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 we get that, you're right, if we use the grant money, but I mean, if we use the bond money, but if we don't use the bond money, then we're not, we're not obligated, if we don't can't use any of that bond money, then we're not obligated to the terms of the bond.
But we are obligated to the terms of the grant.
But.
Correct. I agree, but we just created another mess of a situation where everyone pretty much voted to say renovate and then we had the federal grant. That's where I think the wording matters in the bond, in the ballot question.
It is, it is for a new police station.
So I just, I don't want to see this, I don't want to see us end up in a situation where everyone's under the assumption we're doing one thing and now we have federal money and we pretty much just said, it doesn't matter what the people voted for because we have a federal grant. And if we have a federal grant to pay and it does go through, and there's a big risk there, but if it does go through, then it's no tax dollars that were spent, no bond from the state. I don't want to see us stuck in a situation.
Right.
Well, if we, if we don't go, if they vote, if the voters vote for just a renovation if it's put up there, I assume that the reason why they're doing that is because it's less money and they think that we can do it for less. But if we can get a federally funded full brand new police station, I'm sure they would much rather go that route.
I I agree, I just want to make sure that we've.
So you're saying that language should reflect the potential or the, I mean, how how long are you saying that this could take, the summer you said before?
What what language are you discussing now?
No, well, we're talking about any language that goes on a ballot.
Let me reiterate, this is not a given, this may or may not happen. Now, what's going to happen because this is Senate, this came from the Senator, so I have to disclose it. This may have an influence on the voters, they may say, oh, the federal government's going to pay for this. We don't know that they will. And if you start changing the language on that bond, now you're really going to confuse the residents and the and the voters. So right now, this is a promise to take a look at it, just like Congressman Cicilline's Multi-Generational Center was a promise to take a look at it. This is where we're at, I don't want it to con- convolute or confuse the voters, so be careful when you start talking about changing language.
Mr. Zelensky, can you give a little background, because that's the first I've heard of the $20 million potential? Can you give a little background how that came to fruition?
Yeah, it was the first we heard of that.
Uh, yeah, the last year when Mark Corullo, the planner, submitted grants, applications to Congressman Cicilline, there were two grants that were applied for, one being the police station, that was a preference, number two was Scouter's Hall, which turned into the multi-generational. The police station was turned down last year. This year, we we received notice to apply for a grant. I reached out to the chief, I reached out to Mark Corullo, much of the paperwork had been done the year before. I said, Chief, do you mind reapplying, putting in this time under the chief's name? Chief put it in, now it's getting, it's getting Senate consideration. That's how this came about.
And all the others as well?
Well, the others, the Halliwell grant, as well as the additional $1.4 million for St. Paul Street was done in the last, the waning week of the previous, that temporary grant rider that we had. Ms. Andosia, she submitted that and it's being considered by Senate.
So this would be the third grant relative to the St. Paul Street project?
This will be, this, if this comes to fruition, this will be the second grant. St. Paul Street has one grant, one, $1.2 million. Which this could not come at a better time. EPA is going to mandate the changing of the supply lines due to copper lines, galvanized steel lines and other questionable water lines. This is going to happen. And I'm, I'm strongly suggesting that we keep a positive outlook on this, especially with our congressional leaders, the delegates in Rhode Island, so that they can champion this for the for the town of North Smithfield.
So the 1.4 water and the 1 million from Halliwell came from when we had Lisa Andoja, when we hired her for her services?
That's correct, yes.
I would say that's $5,000 well spent.
I would agree.
But it's all hypothetical right now.
Right now, what is?
It's hypothetical right now. I agree, it's good news.
Let's try to be positive.
It's good, it's great news, it's great news.
All I'm asking is we try to be positive.
It's fantastic news.
Thank you.
It really is.
Good job.
Thank you, Council.
So is there another part with the grants or was there a second? Because this was, this was something new, right?
Yeah, I can give you the basic that the grants are still being reviewed by the government agencies, EPA, St. Paul Street. The Maori Tower Fire is being reviewed by State of Rhode Island Historic Preservation. There's some question about the materials that'll be used up there, can we use similar products that look like what's up there now? And yes, we can, there's a report from PAR saying, PAR Engineering that that's, this can be accomplished. This is where we're at as far as updates on grants.
All right, town website.
I had sent a inquiry to the League of Cities and Towns to try and see if they could send out an inquiry to the other towns, municipalities on what they use for our website, I just haven't heard anything back. I checked back in today, but I haven't heard anything back yet. I did contact Smithfield, they have their, I forgot the name of the website, but they they have, they contracted out to a different, a completely different company. They also have their own IT person as well, so it's kind of a little bit different. That's something that we also have to consider is the fact that finances IT here, whereas other municipalities, they have their own IT, or they outsource it, kind of like how we do. So that's the update as of right now.
Okay.
You're okay?
Can I make a comment about that?
So I have concerns about the website also, but I really feel that, I do not feel it's the website, I feel that we do not have anybody in charge of the website. We do not have somebody who knows where to put things, how to link the setup. We, I think we have a great website, it's just not being utilized properly. So I just hate to see the town go spend all kinds of money and then we do not have somebody with an anchor to to handle that. You know, we're going to spend all kinds of money getting a new program and who's going to actually handle that? It's kind of like general code, we're doing all this work and then it, it's there just because our website's not that old.
I don't think it's the platform because almost a ton of other communities, both in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, use Civic Plus. I think it's probably got some maintenance and cleanup to do, I agree, Joanne, I think it's, you know, and some easy functionality in terms of how to guide people to certain things, because you click on documents and you click on like Budget Committee and stuff from like 2014 and you're like, that's not what I was looking for. So I do think maybe there is ways to improve it that aren't super costly, but maybe it's just this question of the functionality and are there any additional resources needed to help manage a day to day?
Yeah, I I do think that there will need, someone needs to be in charge of the website to make sure things are going in the correct place and the links are put in correctly. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. All right, the next one, discussion by Council of Other Action on Halliwell Demolition Funding Process, Mr. Sanaj.
So I talked to our auditors on the process of how to go about this. They said that the easiest, most functional way to do this would be to do a revenue and expenditure of that cost for the remaining $200,000 for Halliwell. Because if we remember, there was 300,000 in a bond, we need another 200 and change. That would, the easiest way to do it would use fund balance, but have a revenue and expenditure. It wouldn't have any impact on the taxpayers at all. It just, just so, I wanted to present it to the council on on the methodology behind it.
So do we have to draw something up to do that?
Nope.
No?
Just, I just add it into the budget as an item. It wouldn't, like I said, it wouldn't have any impact on the rate, the levy, nothing.
Just in and out?
Just had, just the accounting practice, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just to, just to add, yeah, it's a good point. It would be on the budget you're going to vote on, so when, depending on how the, how you guys want to, how the council wants to proceed, obviously, the Budget Committee is going through their process, they have to present their memo to you. I can either put it in, I can talk with the Budget Committee and put it in theirs to be presented to you, or I can put it into the town council's finalized version as an item, as a line item there. It's kind of, if I was to put it through with the Budget Committee, it would, I'd have to get approval through them to be able to do that. If I just, you know, skipped over them and went to the town council to have it approved in P A line item, it's, that's up to the council.
I mean, as a process, shouldn't we put it through the Budget Committee as a process?
It, yeah, that's, again, I can, I could certainly do that, I don't think that they would have any, any problems with it.
They should have no problems.
Yeah, yeah, it's just another item to add.
But then at least it goes through, yeah.
It's consistent with the other expenditures.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll get in contact with the Budget Committee President and add it there.
Do we need to vote on anything for this or?
Again, this is for the next year's budget.
Yeah.
So if it goes through the, the only time you're going to vote on next year's budget when it comes through the Budget Committee, if it doesn't come through the Budget Committee, Madam President, you would then make your motion at that budget hearing on the council floor to say add an expense and a revenue of 2,000, 200 and, well, whatever that number is.
For Halliwell, okay.
So then we're only anticipating that demolition to be, to take place during the summer, early fall?
Sometime in 20, in early, hopefully in the first half of 2024, Mr. Pendergast can add more detail.
Just clarification on that, please.
Good evening. Question I was just going to ask, I need to get back to them.
Right.
I don't know if they're going to hold the bid price for so long, I'm going to have to read the the contents of the bid package, but I was anticipating that this would happen soon. I understand after talking to the Finance Director that it will go into the next budget, which is July 1st, which is okay, I think we can do that. I just need to have correspondence with this owner who's kind of sitting back, waiting to see what's happening.
Yeah, and that was a very good price that we received, so I'd hate to lose that option and have to go out, rebid and then have another.
Right. I don't anticipate an issue, but I I need to have a dialogue with this gentleman and I've been kind of waiting to see where we're going with this, so if you're going to tell me it's going to be bid, voted on next month of the budget, you know, I can kind of hold them off a little bit, I hope.
Yeah, so it's going to be part of the budget process, correct?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll get in contact with Christine tomorrow and then we'll, we'll add it to the budget, yeah.
Okay, so you think that would be sufficient?
I, I hope it's sufficient, I just hope that it's voted on where it's approved.
Right, so.
Where it's, if it's not approved, then we're, we're back to square one on the demolition.
So can I just ask one question? So if you can just book the revenue and expense, is there a reason why it has to wait until seven, is it because it wasn't part of the budget or can't you just book it if there's no impact?
Yeah, it wasn't part of 23's budget, it's part, we're adding it into 24. If we had to, if we wanted to do it into 23, we'd have to go through a whole amendment, we'd have to have a public hearing, it's, it's a bit of a process and the auditors aren't really huge a fan of that either.
Madam President, I mean, the council certainly could take a vote tonight indicating that they support this being added in the 2024 budget and for consideration as a revenue and expense out of fund balance. That's what, that's the kind of information the Finance Director needs to be saying that this is being supported.
Okay.
Now, the Budget Committee accepts that recommendation, it's on your budget, if they don't, it can still be on your budget.
Right, okay.
I think that's, but if you vote tonight saying that you support this revenue expense calculation, Finance Director will have the council's wishes in a resolution form.
Okay.
I don't know how much stronger you could have than that.
And and I think that's good because I, I need to file a renewal on the evasement plan with the D O H, so that's going to be a few weeks anyway. So it's going to get us into after July 1st anyway. I just need to have some type of a reassurance with the owner of the, the winning bidder, that's all. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, so I'm, I'll make the emotion to authorize, I'll make the motion to fund the Halliwell demolition funding process in the amount not to exceed, since we don't have figures, 300,000?
300.
Yeah, 300,000 is fine.
Okay.
It's not going to exceed that.
So I'll make a, so the motion will be for the Halliwell demolition funding in the amount not to exceed $300,000 and to be incorporated into the fiscal year 24 budget.
I think you're requesting the Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee, is it the Budget Committee?
Madam, Mr. Vice President, just so.
How to fund budget?
The project, the demolition of Halliwell is 500,000 change, this is to supplement.
For the fund balance, right?
From fund balance to meet the bid, so I just don't want to be misconfused otherwise you're approving an item that's less than.
So then, so then, all right, so then the, I'll rescind that and I'll say, then it's for the Budget Committee to add a line item, supplementing the demolition of Halliwell in the amount not to exceed 500,000?
300.
He's saying, how much do you need?
I don't know exactly, so 300, so not to exceed 300,000.
Okay, so not to exceed the, back to the 300.
Yeah.
Leave it at that.
Okay, we have.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it all makes sense, I just want to make sure I have the right amount.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Director?
Yes, yes, it is.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, any other questions?
Just a quick question on the Budget Committee, they're presenting, they have to submit their budget to the council soon, right, it's like next week, I think?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll, I'll end up working with the Budget Committee to get this done.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. All right, let's go back to discussion by Council of Other Action on Payment of Bills. Anyone like to make a motion or have any questions regarding the payment of bills?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
So Anthony, is there any way of maybe for, when we're doing this, just to number them so when we're referencing, it's just quicker, but, so it would be the, the first page after the cover page. And it is Curia Systems, $7,000 for software licenses, do we know where that is going and for whom that is allocated?
Curia is water and sewer.
Yeah.
Water and sewer?
Yeah, yeah, it goes through water and sewer.
Okay.
Had it in the back of my mind, I couldn't remember exactly where that was.
Okay, great, all right, just, yeah, because I, I wasn't familiar with it, that's all.
It's a, I'm pretty sure it's a monthly expense.
Okay, and then we, I noticed that the highway fuel dispenser was inoperable, is it operable now? Is it fixed or are we still getting?
It's backed up, it's backed up a couple of days.
Oh, good.
It was only like a day or two.
Thank you. The other one is on the next page, and I'm sorry again, one, two, the third page after the cover page, and it would be Tri-Tech, about three quarters of the way down, Tri-Tech Software Systems, $19,000 annual maintenance.
I'm, Tri-Tech, I think that is the police department?
I don't know.
I think, all right, let me look, let me look it up real quick.
So it's, yeah, some of the numbers are cut off, so.
What's that?
We don't use Tri-Tech.
Yeah.
We take $19,000.
Was, yeah, yeah. I just, I just want to verify before I say exactly. Because I know, I didn't think that's an item also for the fire department as well.
Well, it's, it's.
Well, it's, it's coded under 4211, I believe that is Police.
I just wanna make sure it's I T real quick. Yep, I T, yep.
It's, it's Police.
Yeah.
Chief, you, you have a second, you, right? Yeah.
That's all I had, thank you. Anyone else?
I have one quick question. The, and I know it's probably from last year's Capitol, but the zero-turn mower, in thinking about it, can we ever just rent that equipment? It's 15,000. No? No, I didn't know if you could like rent it for like the spring or the summer and then give it back, you know? Not gonna mow when it's snowing.
I can't, I can't even rent the street sweep.
That's just a question, that's all. Try to save 60,000.
He's using a dustpan and brush it.
Now you wanna big time, my god.
All right, any other questions on the payment of bills?
No.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of bills as reviewed by the Finance Director for total A C H payments of $2,565,582.47. Total invoices of $304,833.82 with total payments for $2,870,416.29.
Second. It's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Next is discussion by council voter, other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Town Council minutes of April 11th, 17th, 26th, and May 1st, 2023. Communications from Animal Control Monthly Report of April 2023. North Smithfield Municipal Court Monthly Report for April 2023. North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Report for April 2023. And North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Monthly Report for February and April 2023. Anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Nope.
If no one wants to remove, anyone wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
New business discussion by council voter, other action on contract for integrated speaker system at the concession stand, North Smithfield High School, Adam Stanley.
Adam Stanley, Director of Technology, North Smithfield Public Schools. So I'm in here in lieu. Unfortunately, Mr. Tech, the Athletics Director, could not make it tonight, but I worked hand in hand with him to consult with a couple vendors for a P A system for our athletics complex, or our new athletics complex. Basically, if he was here, he would basically say that it's a safety concern for him, because there's, there's a lot of bodies at the, the new concession stand, and there's really no broadcast speaker system right now. So we, we walked the grounds with a variety of vendors, and they worked with their engineers to come up with a variety of quotes, so you have those quotes in front of you. One of the vendors was A T S Eagle, who recently upgraded the P A system at our high school and did a phenomenal job. One of the vendors, I, I felt the quote that we received was, was much too high, one vendor was much too low, so A T S Eagle came right in the middle, and I think they, they hit our needs spot on, what we need. So I'm basically just here to answer any questions, and if anyone has any concerns.
I'd like to ask you a question. This isn't a new problem, it's been around for a little bit, am I right?
Yes, I believe so. I.
Last season, et cetera?
The old, yeah, I believe that the old concession stand also lacked a P A system.
But the existing one didn't work that well, that you're going over right now.
I, I don't even believe that the existing concession stand even had a P A system. Basically, what they do now, what they did back then, is they have a portable P A system. They just bring it in, they plug it in. It's really not powerful enough to do the job of what they really need to do. Like, if, if there's people on the other side of the field, they're not gonna hear the P A system. The one that we have quoted is, it's a much more powerful one, and it can, it can broadcast over the field.
Now, is there any funds left in any department that you can get this, this money from, within the school system?
Possibly, yes. We were informed that funds were available as part of the construction that was, that was leftover that we could, we could tap into, so that's.
Actually, funny, you said, you asked that question. We have, we actually have, Tony, if you can confirm this, we have $100,000 that's been sitting in an account since 2017 for the purpose of building a concession stand. Well, now that it was built and we didn't tap into those funds, I would like to recommend that we use those funds for the loud, for the speaker system, for, and pay the $10,878 out of those funds, and also, that would also free up the money for the school to do a different project with that. That money's just sitting there right now, and I think it would be great if we could purchase the loudspeaker system with some of that money.
So if we don't have the, so I'm just have a quick question, because we have on the, the cover letter, the F Y 19 budget had a, was an amount that was still there. Is that not the case? Which if not, then I agree with, with Council Bureau God.
Yeah, it is coming from, so the, I looked into the reserves, and the 100,000 that Mr. Bureau God is referring to is, is from the F Y 2019.
Okay, perfect.
Twenty, what, yeah?
The F Y 2019 budget, that's where it's derived from. That's, the story that I was told was that the idea was that there, every year, we would start setting aside money to fix concessions then, and we kind of did it one year and never did it after that.
Right.
But that is where the money is deriving from.
And then we can start talking about a Jumbotron.
Sure.
Some, I'm sorry. Some's good all the way around, and.
No pun intended.
Pardon?
No pun intended, some's good.
Well, it's past my bedtime, what can I talk?
Some people are gonna think I'm serious about the Jumbotron, by the way.
No, really.
I bet you are.
I've seen such a transition the last two years in the high school and the middle school's sport situation. The support group at the school is working well with everybody. Attendance has gone up tremendously.
Yes, it has, yep.
And of course, my daughter dresses in funny, funny clothes, so that, that's always a night encounter. But we can encourage more, and they see that the teachers are involved. It'll go a long way. Not only, we know we have a good school system, but you have to let other people know we care. The teachers care, and staff care.
So Mr. Stanley, I do notice that it says here, mounting of speakers and external X L R outlet to the new building exterior involves at a minimum drilling into the siding, and that we're aware of that, and with potential for the modifications would, might need to be made if the structure doesn't hold that.
That's correct.
So are you, are you comfortable, is that, will they be providing the mounting of this as well within this?
Yeah, all, all the services will be done by, by them. They actually did all the exterior mounting for the P A system at the high school, and I will say they did a phenomenal job on it, and they, they really, they had engineers involved, so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve $10,878 from the committed fund balance reserved from F Y 19 for the American Teleconnect Services for a concession stand integrated speaker system at the athletic complex.
Second that move.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Let's have one quick question. If somebody rents the field, will they be able to use the, the system?
That's a good question. I'd have to refer to Mr. St. Jean to answer that question, or possibly the Facilities Director, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you.
Discussion by council voter, other action on change order for town-wide roadway improvements for 2022, 23, Mr. Penegas?
Good evening once again. This is a change order for roadway improvements, specifically drainage work on Pound Hill Road from, off of Route 7, Pine Hill, Pine Hill Road to, I call it the S-curve there, past the recycling place. We've already gone out to bid for the paving of this. It's $271,000, give or take, from Mayozi. We need to do a change order for this drainage work. It's above and beyond what my department is capable of doing. It, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get two easements from two property owners, which we've already been in conversations with them, and we're gonna try and tighten that up this week. The work is probably gonna hopefully stay, with your approval, to start a week from tonight. The quote is from Mayozi for $215,194.91. Tremendous amount of work is going into this drainage to correct a major problem down there. Parts of the road are gonna be elevated, and some parts are gonna be lowered, so that we'll have a nice flow into the catch, new catch basins and hopefully works. So I'm here for the approval of the change order to continue that roadwork.
Does anyone have any questions?
This is in addition to the 271, so this is drainage that was not anticipated?
Correct.
Any further questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the townwide roadway improvements for, what is this for? For Mayozi, for $215,194.91.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
And then discussion by council voter, other action for gasoline and diesel fuel bid, bid extension, Mr. Penegas?
The Rhode Island Municipal Purchasing Agents Association, of which North Smithfield is a part of, usually does the bidding for the diesel and unleaded fuels for the municipalities in the state of Rhode Island. The vendor we use is Peterson Oil Service, and they have agreed to extend their contract for another year, for the upcoming year 2024, at the same price as that we presently pay. So I'm looking to approve the extension year for Peterson Oil.
Any discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of one year fiscal year 24 for the gasoline and diesel fuel bid from Peterson.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Discussion by council voter, other action on agreement for fireworks, Mr. Penegas?
This is through the Parks and Recreation Division, the yearly fireworks display the week after 4th of July. We are piggybacking on the City of Warwick's fireworks bid for the, name of the country, Central Maine, Pyrotechnics in Maine, for the amount of $14,000. Warwick, in their bid package, the letter that they gave me, I had to call back to purchasing agent to get some specifics on it. There are no prices in the City of Warwick's. It's because they have multiple fireworks displays, not one. They have multiple. So every one is based on how many minutes they go. So their 4th of July fireworks display is comparable to the one we use here at 20 to 30 minutes. So that's why it's basically the same price.
I have a question. I just wanna thank you for bringing this forward, and Kate, because originally it started, I was getting funding for this, and then COVID hit, and it got harder and harder to get people to donate for the fireworks. So I think it's great that the town's taking it over, because I just can't go into those same, tapping out those same people, I've, you know.
It gets harder and harder every year.
Yeah, so.
Nope. Well, and this is, and, this is next year's budget.
Yeah.
So it's gone from 13,000 to 14,000.
So that brings up my next question. So would we approve this pending the, the adoption of the budget? Because this obviously, you know, is funds that we haven't really discussed yet.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
It would be approval pending F Y 24 adopt a budget.
Okay.
The 13,000, that's in, this operating obviously was expended back in July when we had the fireworks, this past July.
Right. So the fireworks that we had last summer were in the operating budget?
Correct.
Okay.
For 13,000.
Okay. All right, anyone like to make a motion or any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we enter in an agreement with Central Maine Pyrotechnics for the fireworks display totaling $14,000. The funding will be, the approval will be contingent upon the funding being approved in the 2024 budget.
I'll second.
For discussion, once again, I think it's great that you guys are keeping this tradition going. It started off very small, and now all of a sudden, we had over 1,000 people there last time. Great job by you and Kate keeping it going.
Thank you.
I think it's very important.
Yeah, it's, it's great.
So now this is gonna be, is this a week or so earlier, July 8th?
No, it's, traditionally, when it started, it's the Saturday after the 4th of July, and I think the 4th of July this year is like midweek, Tuesday, Wednesday, maybe? I don't know, but it's that following Saturday. Which is why we can go with that price and still get a pretty decent display.
The reason we started it the week after the 4th of July, sorry, Kate Pescarla, Parks and Rec, is because it would be double the cost if you have it on the 4th or before the 4th. That's why we always held it, that's why John started the weekend after.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on amendment of Water Supply Review Committee Resolution, Mr. Ogier?
Yep, so this was brought up last meeting, and I'm just, so the only change was, is that it's the, I thought we already voted on this, the alternate for the Conservation Commission and with the North Smithfield Land Trust. So I just, didn't we already vote on this? No? Oh, we did the land, the alternate, now, I got you, okay, sorry. So just looking for the alternate to be either from the Conservation Commission or or the North Smithfield Land Trust to be appointed from the town council. It could be either or. I know we filled one from the land trust the last time, and we do have somebody interested from the Conservation Commission, and I know that they were, the Conservation Commission took a vote as to who they would like to see as that member, so I'm just looking for approval of this change. And this should be the last one.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the town of North Smithfield amending the membership of the Water Supply Review Committee as amended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on appointments to town boards/ commissions, multi-generational advisory committee, one member of the public for a term from 2/21/2023 to 2/20/2024, appointed by the TA.
Councilor Muriel Halloran needs no introduction. She's served many community committees in this town. One I thought particularly interesting, especially as we're talking about a multi-generational facility, Muriel's been involved with the arts. And I think that brings a whole different perspective to what can be accomplished at the multi-generational. So, Muriel Halloran is my appointment.
Great choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne, could you just let her know that the first meeting is Monday? Thank you. And the Water Supply Review Committee, one alternate member of the present Conservation Commission or North Smithfield Land Trust, appointed by town council.
Yeah, so it looks like the application didn't make it to the packet. So if the council would be willing, their application was in last meeting, and it's Bob Gillette. So, that is who the conservation, they took a vote at their meeting and appointed him as the person that they would like to see that seat filled by, so.
And he also did sit through the whole last meeting.
He did sit through the whole last meeting. He's been at multiple meetings, and he's attended the water supply meetings as well.
As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on request for mural painting at the concession stand at Pacheco Park. Kate Pascarello? No.
Good evening. I am Kate Pascarello. I am the program coordinator for North Smithfield Parks and Recreation. Before I get started on why I'm here tonight, I just wanted to talk about Pacheco Park as a whole. We have a new Little League Board now. The president of the board, her name is Pam Storm, and I'm super excited about the work that they're doing down there. They've taken upon themselves, they have renovated the concession stand. They have, they've gone out and painted the press boxes, and they're really working hard, putting a lot of time and energy into revitalizing Pacheco Park. So I'm very, very happy to see that. Along with that, Julie Tilly, who's part of the Art Committee, had reached out to me. I thought of this previously, but I thought how great it would be if we could get the Art Committee somehow connected to us in painting murals in town. My personal, because I work for the town, my first thought was concession stand at Pacheco Park. My vision was, you know, when you drive in, the wall that has the bathrooms on it, that first wall, a theme of inclusion, respect, kindness. I would love to see that there. That being said, Julie reached out to me with the same idea, and I thought, wow, this is, this is great. And I think the Art Committee has other visions as well in town. Okay, great. So, before, you know, we come for approval, there are a couple caveats. Pacheco Park is vandalized quite often. I think you know that. You know, we've gone through, I don't know how many picnic tables down there, Ray. Picnic tables go every year, they get destroyed. There's graffiti on the buildings. So that was my first concern. If we paint this beautiful mural over the whole scape of one side of concession stand, how do we protect it? I don't think there really is a way to protect it per se, other than video surveillance. And I know this has been a topic for a few years now. Getting cameras down there, so that we can have footage. And, you know, whoever is creating the vandalism needs to be held accountable for it. That includes bringing Wi-Fi down there, obviously, so the cameras can be enabled. I brought up that issue to Julie. I said, well, you know, there is, at some point, and I hate to be negative, something's gonna happen to those murals. Do we put plastic, you know, I was trying to think out of the box, like, how do you protect them? And she responded with, no, we would just have to, we'll go down and have, and we'll touch them up. So before we move this any further, I brought this idea to Ray and to Paul, and they suggested that I bring it to you all tonight. So, this is Julie from the Art Committee. If you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm Sarah from the Art Committee.
And Sarah from the Art Committee.
I'll just, I'll add a couple words. We're in the beginning stages of planning some murals within town, and we have scouted a couple locations, and we're in talks about a couple different locations. But when I spoke with Kate, she was very excited for us to get started at Pacheco Park, so. The main concern is the vandalism, so, you know, what we decide to do going forward really depends on the presence of the police department and the town down there, you know, going forward and making it safe for everybody.
Can, can I just say? I agree 1,000%. I was actually gonna ask during the grants, and I forgot, if we could find any money to put cameras down at Pacheco. You know, I think, there's been documented vandalism and other things. I think the day and age we live in, I think it makes total sense to have that extra layer of security. Other communities have it, so I know I would be in support of it.
Who's, who's gonna be doing the artwork?
We're in the planning stages. Sarah has some murals she's done, and she has some...
You've done?
I've done all of them, yes.
Wow.
If you want to take a peek, those are just ideas.
They look cute. And everybody's safe. Very nice. Are you coming to us requesting funds? Or requesting just support? I mean, at this point? Because we have nothing in our packets, that's why I'm curious.
No, I was not requesting any funds. I haven't been asked for any funds.
No, we're in the planning stages at this...
We just wanted approval to move forward. So, before, you know, I had anything concrete, like, you know, this is exactly what we're gonna put on there. We just wanted to make sure that you are on board with it. I know that, as a committee, Julie had said, this is maybe the first step in, in painting our town. You know, I thought, wow, gee, if we do my, if we did the bathroom side, then, you know, this, just, we're just brainstorming. Maybe high school does one side, maybe some elementary kids, you know, come in and do another side. You know, there's different public spaces in town that they may want to look out to if you, if we decide to move forward.
There's a lot of walls out there.
A lot of walls out there.
And, I don't know if you've ever been to Nashville...
And sidewalks, and all kinds of things.
I don't know if you've ever been to Nashville, but you could actually take a tour, a mural tour. There's murals all over the city. I think that'd be great, if you've got something like that going.
I think the town would really like that. You know, we could put hashtags, get the kids involved.
Yeah, I agree.
Very nice.
All right, so we just, we're looking permission to move forward.
Got it.
Yep, we got it.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Maybe for the council, but since we are coming up to the budget season, you know, would it make sense to look at how much would it cost to put cameras or security down there? Even if it's not for this year, next year? You know, to figure out how much we need to, maybe, maybe it's a two-year project?
Honestly, I don't even think we should try to do a mural down there unless we have it.
Yeah.
To be honest.
I think it's basic safety, you know, too, to have it down there.
Even without the murals, as Karen, I would like it...
Definitely safe. It's a safety issue.
We can move into the playground, too. That's another safety issue down there, that playground.
That also needs addressing.
I'm just gonna sneak that one in.
That's okay, sneak it in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A discussion by council voter, other action on emergency 911 telephone recording system. Chief Shadier?
Can I see that? Excuse me, can I see it? You know, I'd like to get your opinion.
Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight requesting some funding for a new telephone recording system in our dispatch center. Just a little bit of history. The state 911 system is upgrading, and they're changing all their telephone lines to digital telephone lines. The recording system that we currently have in our dispatch center is only capable of recording analog telephone lines. So basically, what that means is we would no longer be able to record any of the emergency calls, or non-emergency calls, for that matter, that come into our dispatch center. Sometimes that becomes a very vital part of what we do. Sometimes we need to go back and, and reference those, those recordings. We're suggesting that we award the bid to Equiture in the, in the amount of $19,461.60. This will be spread out over a five-year period. And the annual payment would be $3,892.32 per year, except for in year one. Year one, we tack on a $1,500 installation and configuration fee. That's a one-time fee. So, this first payment would be for $5,392.32. And that would be coming out of Fund 120. That's the third-party billing rescue account.
And I like the fact that it has a maintenance agreement, too.
It is, yes.
Very often, we buy things, and then we don't maintain them, and then we have to buy them again. So this is a great idea.
If we bought it outright, you know, if we paid upfront, it wouldn't have had the, the maintenance agreement with it. I will add also that this, that Equiture is on the Houston-Galveston area council municipal bid, and also in General Services Administration, MPA, as well.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency 911 telephone recording system in the amount of $5,392.32 in year one, and in the amounts of $3,892.32 in the remaining four years.
As a motion?
Second motion.
Second? Any further discussion?
Do we need a total?
Total amount of $19,461.60.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on IT support for the fire department. Chief Shadier?
Yes. I'm also requesting a little bit of history on this as well. Our IT support people that we've had for several years, even prior to my arrival into the department, with CAI software, they've been bought out, and they, they will no longer be providing any kind of technical support. So they informed us back in November or December that at the end of this year, June 30th, our, our contract wouldn't be renewed with them, so that forced us to have to go out and get a new contractor. So we, we got the bids, and we ended up with Apex Technology. That's also the IT company that handles all the police department's IT needs as well, and they, in lengthy discussions with Chief Lafferty, they're very happy with, with their services. So I'd like to propose that we award the contract to Apex Technology in the amount of $10,332. That's an annual contract.
And that's also coming from a third party?
It is, yes. Had CAI not come out, dropped us, this would have just been a renewal. So when I brought it to Jeri Ann, before Tony came, came in, she said, because it was a new contract, I would need to, to come and have it approved by, by you folks, so. But that's typically where that gets, see, our annual renewal was coming out of every year.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the IT support for the fire department from Apex Technologies Group in the amount of $10,332 annually.
Second? Any further discussion?
I, I just have one question. So, that was my question, was I know the police use Apex. I think they started using them last year, right? So, was there any chance to maybe, like, bundle certain services to try to reduce the cost? Or is it two separate functionalities?
Yeah, they're two totally different, that's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Good try, though.
Yeah.
I like the way you think.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second, Joanne?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Discussion by council voter, other action on paving by Rhode Island Energy. Mr. Penegas?
Okay. All the gas work that's been done in town, where I gave permits out for the last two, three years, is finally paying off for us. So, I'm, I'm looking for your approval to authorize Hartford Paving off the state MPA to, let me back up a second. Hartford Paving is the contract to forward Rhode Island Energy slash National Grid. What happens is there was a new law enacted in 2019 that favors cities and towns. So wherever National Grid cuts their lines and their limitations, in some cases, a quarter of the road is not completed. their lines and their limitations, in some cases, a quarter of the road is not completed. The example I've been given lately is Ridge Road. They came in from North Main and stopped before the bend, and they came in from near the church and stopped. So you've got this little spot that there's no gas work, but if they paved it, they're not going to pave that little elbow. And there's numerous streets in town where they just, they won't finish because they don't have to by law. But the new law affords us to go after them to do curb-to-curb paving. So we met with them last week. They're going to be in Wind Socket next week, I think for the next two weeks, and then they're coming to North Smithfield. So I'm looking for approval for $93,349.74 to finish some of the roadways so it looks like the road's complete. That's, I think, the best way I can put this. So as an example, Ridge Road, for us to finish that road, it's $7,440. If I take their numbers and if I was to pave Ridge Road, the full length of Ridge Road, it would be $29,260. So for us to complete Ridge Road, it's costing us $7,400 for a $30,000 road. So the $93,000 that we'll be paying Rhode Island Energy or Hartford Paving finishes Ridge, Morriav, Summit, White Parkway, Glen, Merrimack, Wedgewood, and Candlewood. All those roads are completed gas work, but those are the only roads where their limits fell short of the entire road being paved. So I'm asking that we finish that road so Merrimack is completed and the rest of the roads are completed. And, you know, I was just kind of playing around with my calculator today, and the $93,000 that I'm requesting to pave Hartford Paving, if we were to take those same roads, it would be $603,000 of paving of roadway that we'd get done. Total of 16 roads. I personally think this is a great deal. And they'll be here in a couple of weeks. The biggest complaint, nothing against Police Department, the biggest complaint that I ever hear in town is the roads. Roads and trash. Those are the two biggest complaints that I hear in town. Police Department, they're on their own.
So, may I? So if it's a curb-to-curb, and I understand we're getting a savings because we're only doing a small portion of something that was curb-to-curb, right, they're not required to complete a small, like an elbow, like you're saying on Ridge. So these other roads have a similar situation where there's paving, paving, and then somewhere in the middle it's bumpy, bumpy?
Yes, yes. So if they don't extend their gas lines, for whatever reason, makes no sense on Ridge Road. It just totally, it doesn't make any sense. Here's the example, I think maybe a better example. Morriav off of Wind Socket Hill and back, Arnold, Bellevue, all those streets, they're going to, we're going to pay them $25,114 to complete. They only went halfway down the road and then they stopped. So now I've got half a road done. I've got residents coming out saying, it's all marked, why are you not finishing this road? So we are going to finish that road. Now, that's the highest one that we'll be paying at $25,000. But now I have a road completed, of which, Morriav is the example, is $32,000 to complete. So that's the highest one. Other than that, like Wedgewood is $2,600. It's just, for $93,000, it's in my operating budget. We have it. I'm constantly, like I said, getting beat up over road conditions. If I can get $600,000 worth of roads done for $93,000, I think that's a good deal.
Can I just ask? So it's this year's? Because I know the back memo, it's at fiscal year '24, so I just want to make sure.
In the operating budget? No, I have, I have.
It's from this year's, okay.
I have enough money, yes.
Stop the confusion. Thank you.
Any further questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the paving by Rhode Island Energy. What's the company's name again?
Hartford Paving.
Hartford Paving in the amount of $93,349.74.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Mr. Penegas, I'd like to ask you a question while you're up there.
Sure.
When National Grid borrowed to bring in the new gas lines from the street into the property line, they never sent out warnings about sinkholes. Some people have found them. Some people have fallen through them. Why aren't they warning people? Because your grass looks great. One day you have a smooth surface, the next day you have a hole. And you can't even tell the way the road's cut up. Where these borrowing went to, and they go, you and I know that's a straight line.
Yep.
And it's not always the same depth because of slant of houses. Shouldn't there be something to warn?
I would think so.
Or should I call public utilities?
I mean, I could speak to them. I deal with Rhode Island Energy now quite a bit. The department I'm dealing with right now is basically just a restoration of the road.
The one that has a post office in Sladeville, is that gentleman, that you're dealing with that I think is leading all the digging that's going on now?
No, it's like different divisions of like the road restoration and the installations and the laterals and all that stuff. It's all different. GPL is the contractor. But I certainly can speak to them on some issues.
Okay, I appreciate that. They should be warned.
Yep, I can do that. Before I leave, can I just, a reconsideration on the fireworks? Can you, I forgot to say that the administrator can get authorization to sign the agreement.
Just ask that question. There's three other things I signed for, but that's something I want authorization. Thanks.
So then do I just need to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes. Which, you got to the fireworks, that's item 9D, and that one's particularly important because it's on next year's budget.
Okay.
So I'd ask you to reconsider item 9D to authorize the administrator to sign that agreement.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reconsider item 9D. And then.
You need a second?
I need a second, then we need to vote on the reconsideration, and then we do the motion.
Second.
Now you're going to vote to reconsider it? Take a roll call vote?
Roll call to reconsider that vote?
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
So the item back before you approved it, the director is saying he'd ask it to be approved again, but also authorize the administrator because you're authorizing a signature and agreement now that's coming out of next year's budget.
Okay.
So you're authorizing the money, even though it's going to show up in the budget, and you're authorizing the signature basically ahead of the budget process.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the amount for the fireworks of $14,000 from Central Main. Is that the company? Firework?
Central Main Pyrotechnics.
Central Main Pyrotechnics, and to authorize the administrator to sign.
Second.
For next year's fiscal budget.
Second. And that's pending approval, right?
Pending, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move up open forum for agenda items only to be moved up prior to executive session. Anyone want to speak on that?
Malley Jones, 62 Ferrier Street. Let me preface this by saying that I hold the North Smithfield Police to force in very high regard. I have not had many interactions with them, but the ones that I have had, I have been treated with kindness and empathy, and I can't say enough positive about them. They have been wonderful in all of my interactions with them. Having said that, however, the dollar figures that we're hearing about the police station, particularly, well, both new and, I guess, the renovation because they're so close, those dollar figures that we're hearing in terms of the average impact per household, for some households, it's just not palatable. It really is not palatable. And when I listen to the plan for the bond question, I really like the fact that it's being split out into new renovation or obviously the not at all, which you have to include. But, I mean, for me, for instance, and I consider myself to be a pretty average taxpayer in this town, it's over 10% of my property tax, that average impact that they're talking about. And that is in addition to my taxes, which are now 20% higher than when I bought my current house in 2017. So it is a significant impact for me at this point in time, and I don't think that I'm alone. And at some point, the calculus just doesn't work anymore. I mean, I've lived in North Smithfield since 1999. This is the second home I've owned here. I purchased the second home specifically to keep my younger child in the school system here. My older one had just graduated, but I purchased just to keep her in the school system so she could finish school with her friends. North Smithfield has been very good to me. The police have been very good to me. But my concern with this is that you're going to end up with a no vote on this because those $2 figures are so close that the impact is basically going to be the same, the average impact per household. And it's not going to be palatable for a lot of people. It just isn't. Now, I have spent some time looking through the report that was generated, the one, I think, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but the most recent one was dated September 2021. It's out on the website with the figures of 18.3 and 17.5 roughly. And I really, I really wish that it had been done with the must-have and nice-to-have because there are definitely some items in there that, unless I'm completely out in left field, they are nice-to-haves. They're not have-to-haves. And I really worry that we're going to end up with a no vote, particularly given that, you know, this has been voted on before, the money for this. And we have money sitting. My understanding is that there's money that's been sitting for a really long time for the renovation, and that there are things that we're hearing that needed to be done, needed to be done to that police station. And rather than doing the bare minimum to make it reasonably habitable while the fight for the new station goes on, because it's obvious that's what's being pushed for, that nothing has been done for the police station. Nothing has been done for these people who work so hard for us. And the money is there to at least do a bare minimum. I mean, I'm hearing about toilets cracking. Why aren't we replacing those? Why aren't we, you know, taking care of the drafts around the windows? That sort of thing. That, to me, seems obvious, but it hasn't been done. And it just seems to be a real disconnect with what I'm hearing about how important it is to provide people with a good working environment. Why haven't we done the bare minimum since, what was it, 2014? I think that that last vote was. Why haven't we done that? So if these numbers stand, the 18.5 and, or the 17.5 and the 18.3, or whatever they might be, I think you've got a real fight on your hands. And in terms of that real fight, it is difficult to find all of the information that's out there. It, I mean, it's not easy to find on the town website, and I know we talked a little bit about the town website, so I can talk about this here because it was an agenda item. You have indicated that you want people to be informed, that when they go to the polls in November, that they know why and how and what. Right now, I think what would be really helpful would be a link on the town website on the homepage at the top so people don't have to scroll to find it. That says exactly what that link is for. Information about the new or renovated police station. Tell them what it is, and when they click on it, it goes to a site where all of the current documents are right there, and there are folders showing the documents from previous iterations, so that people can easily find that information and inform themselves if that's what they want to do. Not everyone's going to want to do it, but I shouldn't have to go on a treasure hunt to find this information. It should be readily available if indeed the town does want people to be informed, make it easy for them to find that information. And then in terms of the town website in general, I agree, the information is out there, but man, it is hard to find. You know, the fact that if you want to look at, we talked about this, trying to find the updated ordinances, they're not, if you click on the ordinance link, that's not where they are. You have to go to the town clerk thing. Well, if I hadn't asked you, I would have had no idea that that's where you needed to go. I would suggest, I understand that people have said that they've seen other town websites that they like, hire somebody, hire a consultant, say, oh, we like Cumberland's site, or we like Lincoln's site, or whichever one it is, but these are the things that are different about North Smithfield that would need to be addressed. Have them use that website as a base and build a website that is navigable and easy to use for the people of North Smithfield so that they can stay informed. And then hire someone to come in once every two weeks for one hour. It's probably all you'll need once it's done to update. Any new docs? All right, well, they go here, here, and here, and do it. Once you have it in place and organized and easy to navigate, you can keep it updated and keep people informed. And then a lot of the chatter that goes on about stuff in town will be negated because people will have the real information that they need. But make it easy for us, please. Okay? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
First of all, I agree wholeheartedly with some of the comments that were made by Malley, and in particular, that to put the $17 million renovation on the ballot would be a joke. It's not the $17 million renovation. It's renovation addition. The current police station is 14,950 square feet, I believe, which is what you're talking about building now. So let's get everything in perspective here. But secondly, you know, I've said repeatedly that to get the amount of what the cost is for the renovation that was approved by the voters in 2014 is a minimal amount of money that you'd have to pay Mr. Army to work with the estimators and come up with current costs. You have very reliable information there, and you could know that number within a week, I would guess, or two weeks perhaps. But I want to take exception to something that I heard. So I would like to see that renovation on the ballot. Again, what I've been saying all along, the 2014. There was a comment made that, you know, we wanted to renovate and meet standards in code. And I want to highlight that that renovation from 2014 met all the codes. But I want to dwell on standards because those designs, by the way, to prove that they all met codes, were all signed off on by all the public officials who had to sign off on the codes, okay?
Excuse me. Paul? Malley? Excuse me. Paul? Can we just listen to Mike? Thank you.
Those plans that were designed by Mr. Army for $225,000 that we paid him to were all signed off by every official who had to sign off on approving the plans. They were approved. They, you know, the lines about, oh, they didn't meet code, that's nonsense. I'm sorry. So again, invite Mr. Army in, and he'll defend what met the code and what didn't meet the code. As for the standards, I'm glad we heard the number about the middle, the science, the high school renovation and the school renovation bond being $2 million over budget, because that was because we built the science rooms to standard. There were three or four places in the reevaluation report for the high school that said, fix the broken water lines and gas lines in the science labs and replace some equipment that's lost or damaged. That's what it said, okay? The superintendent at the time talked the entire town into believing that we're going to lose accreditation, which was nowhere near the truth. It wasn't even, you know, there wasn't even a warning, basically. You had 10 years to make some type of remedy to that. But that's all it said. Repair the water broke, the broken water and gas lines in the science labs. What did they do? Why did that go over $2 million? Because they took two science rooms, three rooms, basically, moved the science rooms, the two science rooms, enlarged them, and built them to current standards, like if you were building a new science room today in a new building, that meets the standards. That's why it was $2 million over. We didn't have to do that. We had to repair and replace the broken pipes and buy new equipment, and we'd get rid of the old equipment in all nine, in all six of the labs, not just build in two of those labs and spend $2 million over what the, the original bond had $900,000 to fix the science labs, according to this, to what the NESTIC report was requesting, not NESTIC, I'm sorry, the NIAS report was requiring. So that's standard. And when Mr. Vadne says, you know, build it to standard, that's making everything in there brandy-new, like we're building a new, build a new fire station. So the room sizes are what they would be in a new fire, a new police station. And the equipment is all up to date totally, state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art. Half the police stations in this state, I'm quite sure, probably would not meet standards today. They're not running out and building new ones. And everything that is in that proposal, the last proposal from Tecton, every type of room, every type of requests that was put into Mr., I'm sorry, Tecton's proposal, is in Eric Army's plans. It is the same number of cells and such that the last revision has. And so, you know, we've got to get away from this standard stuff because that's like, you know, the, something in the education field, the speech therapists come up with standards, and they get legislation passed saying the standard for speech therapy should be no more, no speech therapist should have more than 19 kids. Well, that's wonderful, but is it realistic? You know, so it's a professional thing that you aim for, but you don't have to meet in a current building when you're renovating. And the last thing was, I want to know, you know, the comment was made that at least three of you voted to build new. And I don't remember that ever happening, especially with three of you, because all of you have been on the council at different times in this, you know, this long fight for a new station, as Malley referred to it. And it's never happened. But if it did happen, I'd like to know what council did that. And I'd like to know from Mr. Iglesias how they had the right to override the decision made by the voters in 2014 that we were going to renovate. How can you say, and how can, how can you now feel compelled to follow what this committee is recommending when you totally disregarded the former committee's recommendation after the voters had approved it, by the way, and threw it out the window? And now you're being told, oh, you have to follow what we said. It's an advisory committee. The MBRTF is an advisory committee. They can give you advice. You don't have to follow it. There's nothing that's chiseled in stone that says, and if we recommend a $20 million police station, that's the Taj Mahal of police stations, you have to support it. You have to be smart and reasonable and responsible to the taxpayers and look at every option. And that one option that makes a big difference for people like Malley, who say, you know, 17 to 20, you're going to lose on both, is the renovation. That may cost five or six. And, you know, if you want that number, DJ, it's, I don't know, I'm guessing maybe $8, $10,000 to get it, to have a new cost estimator come up with the current prices of that plan, which met code, and has everything in it that this new plan has, except for, of course, the wonderful, your favorite thing, John?
Sallyport.
Sallyport, Sallyport.
Very well.
Which can be added on for $85,000, according to one of the meetings that I attended of the MBRTF, if you just do a chain link, a chain link fence enclosure.
Oh, geez.
So that can be added on to that. And I think, you know, it just, it upset me to hear that a prior, prior town council, I want to know which one it was, who was sitting on it, made the decision that you had to build new. And what audacity that council had to totally disregard the fact that the voters had already voted to renovate. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Mr. Clifford, I'd like to respond to just a few things.
As long as I can respond back.
I'm just going to say this very nicely. When they, the state, we're mandated that our labs had to be updated. Why? Because years ago, when the labs were built, you used to plug things into the pour. We all know water spills. You have something plugged into the pour. They've learned as time goes on that these things had to go. I'm not done. You can sit down. And then you have wires, like on these bars, over the kid's head while they're working. Not too smart. So when they come in, there has to be reasons why as time goes on. Most of us, when you were going to take biology, you get a little in the lab, and then you had chemistry, but they didn't have the variations that are taught today, and they should be taught, because guess what? Time moves on. And it has to be safe, and it should be up to code. Why should you have something new when you're already 10 years behind? Then it's not really new, and it doesn't meet certain mandates. If you're going to do something, it has to be done correctly. And they had, they needed a place to store chemicals that were safe. It wasn't done just to spend money. It was done so it'd be done right. Number two.
I'm just gonna say that I stand by my comment that was factual. There's few references, and very minor, in the NEAS report that said, "You have to fix the broken pipes and, and lines," okay? It was a decision to go over the money that, that bond approved by the school committee to do a completely rehab on two labs-
Okay, but we're talking about the police station, so, all right.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Anyone else wanna speak in public? All right, next item is executive session. Huh? I know. It's gonna take us 10 minutes just to figure it out. Discussion by Council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, collective bargaining, changes for the recording clerk's job description slash pay and memorandum of understanding with Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCME, AFLCIO, on behalf of Local 937. A, adoption of memorandum of understanding with Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCME, AFLCIO, on behalf of Local 937, removing the position slash job description slash pay for the existing position entitled recording clerk, and creating a new position slash job description pay for a new position entitled clerical slash financial specialist. B, approval and ratification of amendment to agreement between the Town of North Smithfield and Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCB, AFLCIO, and on behalf of North Smithfield Town Employees, Local 937. July 1st, 2000, is that supposed to be 23, one?
2021.
2021 to June 30th, 2024, removing the position slash job description slash, slash pay for the existing position entitled recording clerk, and creating a new position slash job description slash pay for a new position entitled clerical financial specialist. Two, potential litigation regarding Town Retirement Fund. C, discussion by Council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A5. Any discussions or considerations related to the acquisition of lease of real property for public purposes, or for the disposition of publicly held property where in advance public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public. And A, discussion, vote, or other action on the acquisition of real property for public purposes.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
Motion and second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I asked Mr. McGee to be here tonight, because we asked him to look into something for us, and he has some answers, if he could just come in for that.